All right. And good evening and welcome to the Crestwood School District Board of Education. This is our regularly scheduled board meeting for Monday, May 24th of 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:04 and ask for Madam President to please take role.
Mrs. Berry?
Here.
Mrs. Elzayat?
Here.
Mrs. Fawaz is absent. Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Myself, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Here.
Mr. Saban?
Here.
Mr. Chair of the Forum?
All right, thank you, Madam Secretary. And at this time, we ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so Madam Secretary, if you could, our consent agenda?
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the May 24th, 2021 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, April 26th, 2021, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, April 26th, 2021, the minutes from the executive session meeting on Tuesday, May 18th, and the check registry dated April 1st through April 30th, 2021.
Support.
All right, so we have a motion from Najah, supported by Nadia, that the Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the May 24th, 2021 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, April 26th, 2021, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, April 26th, 2021, and the minutes from the executive session meeting on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, and the check registry dated April 1st through April 30th of 2021. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, so at this time, I don't think that I should do the honors of this introduction, but I would like to turn it over briefly to our superintendent, who is very happy, very eager, and probably will do a much better job than I in introducing someone who's going to be a figurehead and someone that our community will greatly appreciate and look forward to seeing here as our new leadership for Riverside. So, Dr. Musallim.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you Board of Education. I'd like to introduce, and please help yourself to the podium, Mr. Scott Caseball. Mr. Scott Caseball has already jumped into the role as Principal of Riverside Middle School. I am so delighted to have someone with Mr. Caseball's experience. Mr. Caseball, his bread and butter was middle school, and at one point, he was moved over to high school, which then was the icing on the cake in his situation, because he was put into a situation where he had to help a school that was in priority status, almost at a point where the state was going to take the school away from the school district. And he and his team brought that school to levels that it has not seen for many, many years. I am excited to say he is part of our team now here at the Crestwood Schools, and I can tell you that in the short amount of time he has been here at Riverside Middle School, he's already made an impact and a difference. So, I am so excited, and I will be honest, Mr. Caseball and I have known each other for probably, what, 20 years now?
Long time.
We've known each other for a long time, and we've been through some battles together. So, when you're, you know how it is, when you're, when you're in a situation with someone else and you went through some difficult times together, that's when you know a brotherhood is established, and I'm so excited to have him here. So, Mr. Scott Caseball.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, first of all, to the Crestwood Board of Education, each and every one of you, the trust you put in me, the trust you put in the team. Thank you to Dr. Musallim, Dr. Lazar. I've been accused of a lot lately, a lot of smiling in one week. There's a reason why. The staff here has been so welcoming and wonderful, the community, the district team and leadership, I just can't say enough. But I can't forget my wife and my two children at home, they've supported me on all of my journeys and throughout my career. I just look forward to getting started, finishing the year strong, and starting the year late summer and in the fall. I just look forward to this tremendous opportunity, I can't thank you enough, so thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
If I could, I know that you were not here on the day that we made the official announcement that you would be taking over the, this, this moving train and, and as it proceeds forward with the success, but we're so happy that you were able to make it here today, and we hope that those in our viewing audience will recognize who you are and what you stand for, which is most importantly, our students and their education here at Crestwood and the new leader of Riverside Middle School. So, thank you.
Sounds great to hear. Thank you for the opportunity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. And trust me, I know Mrs. Caseball, and if he steps out of line, she'll make sure he...
All right, and, okay, so with that, we do have you up at the, at the wheel again.
Oh, yes.
So, for a board brightener.
Board brighteners, I'd like to invite the, a part of this social emotional support team to come up to the podium, please. Each will introduce themselves, but I do want to just preface this real quick of what is all up, please come on up, don't, don't, don't stand back. When I came in as superintendent, one of the promises that I made to the Board of Education at that time, and I continue to make, and I continue to strive for, is that we support our students beyond the classroom, that we support our students with social and emotional supports. I continuously say, maybe I need to patent this, but until we get past the firewall of emotional needs, we will never get to the academics. And students bring a lot to the table. And I came to this team, this team consists of counselors, social workers, school psychologists, community liaisons, administrators, it's everyone. And our, one of our first meetings was virtual, it was tough, but then we had a meeting in this room, and the table was all the way around the room with everyone, there are many more people that are part of this team. And I will tell you, we discussed and we all agreed what we need to do in order to help our community, because it's not just about the students, it's the whole community. But moreover, in the conversations, they discussed like, how do we support teachers? How do we support anyone that is going through a struggle, especially during this pandemic? And the greatest thing about it is, as we all learn, we learn more from our struggles than we do our successes. And I will tell you that in the beginning of this process, it was a struggle, because for the first time, it, all of these individuals were asked to cross boundaries, to sit and speak with one another about how and what they do and how they can support each other. And I am so excited and so proud of this team. They have overcome some obstacles, they have built friendships, camaraderie, and now they can bounce ideas off of each other to help our students and our community. So with that said, again, I'd like to turn it over to the team, and I am so excited that this is one of many board brighteners to come about what our teachers are doing in our school district.
Thank you, Dr. Musallim. Good evening, Crestwood Board of Education, administration, staff and community. My name is Tamara Vakian, and I am the school psychologist at Crestwood High School. I have the humbling task of beginning our presentation this evening. As a daughter of Armenian Lebanese parents, I know all too well the effect of generational trauma on a person's social and emotional well-being. More recently, my husband and I celebrated the birth of our first child, Sirun, meaning beautiful or lovely in Armenian. I know many have heard the saying that you really don't understand what it's like until you have a child of your own, and with the birth of our daughter, I can honestly say that while I've always believed my line of work was meaningful, I now have a much deeper appreciation and purpose for helping our young people. We have experienced an immense amount of uncertainty since the spring of 2020, as we struggled to cope with COVID-19. Now, one year later, even as many individual states in America and countries around the globe reopen, many of us are struggling to comprehend the scope and impact of the novel coronavirus on our physical health, individual and collective financial stability, job security, social morale, school operations, and importantly, mental health and well-being. For many, this disruption and trauma has been compounded by continued racial, ethnic and economic disparities. All of these things contribute to feeling unable to control our surroundings or the outcome of events, which often significantly increases anxiety. When worrying about a lack of control becomes chronic, we are more likely to be continuously in a heightened state of stress with only brief, unsatisfying intermissions between fears. It's difficult to imagine trying to accomplish anything beyond simply learning and implementing new survival routines in such a heightened state of anxiety. Such anxiety may intrude on our reality so that it is even difficult to see the good or feel a sense of relief in what is working well. At the beginning of the school year, we were asked to come together to address the social and emotional needs of our communities. In order to address the issues and the needs of our students, staff and parents, middle and high school counselors, school psychologists, social workers, PBIS and restorative facilitators and community liaisons have been meeting regularly and have been collaborating to find comprehensive solutions in this bizarre new normal. First, we felt it was important that all students are aware that there are support staff available in their schools and that they can reach out at any time they need help or someone to talk to. We created introduction videos that can be found on the Riverside Middle School and Crestwood High School websites, so that their, so that the students and their families are aware of who we are and how we can help. I would like to introduce our Riverside and Crestwood Social Emotional Support Team. From Crestwood High School, we have our counselors, Noor Asbahi, Shadia Berry, Mona Hamadi and Yusra Hamadi, our social workers, Ryan Abu Hassan and Zahra Zarul, ELL liaison, Eman Elserci, restorative practice facilitator, Leon Wallace, and myself, Tamara Vakian, as the school psychologist. From the Riverside Middle School, we have our counselors, Hyam Brinjikji and Lauren Davison, social workers, Taghrid Al Ghazali and Mona Berry, ELL liaison, Farida Jacobs, restorative practice facilitator, Rashid Baydoun, and school psychologist, Melissa Noel. I would like to thank this incredible group of people for all of their time and efforts, the expertise that each of these individuals bring from their various backgrounds are most valuable as part of our collaborative efforts. And next, I would like to introduce my colleague, Yusra Hamadi.
Thank you, Tamara. So, I thought I'd be nervous, but being half-turfy and with such a supportive welcoming board, I think I'm okay. So, hello, my name is Yusra Hamadi, and I'm the counselor at Crestwood High School, and I want to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share this important initiative with you this evening. I bring to this discussion a very personal perspective, because I myself am a Crestwood graduate, go Chargers, and I am now a staff member here at Crestwood, in the Crestwood District. Throughout my experience in our district, I've witnessed great success and some difficult challenges. So, when we were tasked by our superintendent to collaborate with a district-wide solution to address the social and emotional needs of our district community, I was taken aback at first, having never really been tasked with creating whole change and working with colleagues across the district. I think for the most part, many of us felt a little uneasy, because this was like uncharted territory, but with Dr. Musallim and Andrew O'Hara at the helm, we were able to have a clear vision to move forward. I want to thank Tamara, Mona Rashid, and all the members of our committee that made this process possible by bringing their experience and professional insight to develop our new During the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, educators in schools demonstrated amazing resilience and problem-solving skills, jumping into action to serve students with guidance that was sometimes missing, vague, overwhelming or contradictory. Many administrators and teachers had to make quick decisions about how to operate in ways that served their communities with heart, while simultaneously continuing the educational missions they have always had. We saw district leaders scramble to secure Chromebooks, because they knew that solving the problem of equity came before online learning. We also saw principals instructing teachers to put academics aside, to focus on connecting with students in meaningful ways, providing a sense of safety and consistency, and teaching valuable social-emotional learning skills. Many educators took matters in their own hands to provide the heart-centered care their school communities needed. So, we have developed and streamlined ways that staff, students and parents can access support through our comprehensive referral process. The committee created a Google form, which identifies the areas of support the student may need. So, this Google form can be found in a district shared folder, it's found on our website, and of course Rashid, talented Rashid, took it a step further and even created a QR code that the teachers can just scan. And you guys can try it out yourselves too, because I provide...
I just did.
Oh, did you already?
Yeah.
Awesome. So, like with a more robust system of support, we as counselors, social workers, psychologists and other support staff are able to work as a cohesive team. In addition to the referral process, we were able to work with our restorative PBIS school improvement committees to get input from our staff, as we asked them to get a feel of the referral form, and we wanted them to provide us with feedback. So, by including the teachers, we were able to ensure that these new systems of support are tested, ensuring success. So, through this wonderful district initiative, we are putting staff and student well-being ahead of academic performance, even while they are looking to establish more comprehensive or formalized systems of support, rather than operating moment to moment and day to day. This type of leadership has made a significant difference in schools across the country. During a time of crisis, staff often feel reassured by leaders who are informed, caring and decisive. School personnel, as well as students and families, they want clarity around roles and expectations, to be involved in making crucial decisions, and to have the autonomy and flexibility to plan and adapt protocols to meet their needs. And thank you, I would like to introduce my outstanding colleague, Mona Berry.
Thank you, Yusra. Greetings. My name is Mona Berry, and I am one of two social workers at Riverside Middle School. I began my journey here at the Crestwood District nine years ago, when I enrolled my oldest, who's currently a freshman in high school. Having only attended school in Canada, I wasn't familiar with the American education system. My husband now, and Executive Vice President of Delta Airlines, was having to move from state to state before finally being selected to take the position he currently holds in Detroit. My children have attended school in Atlanta, Georgia, and other schools. This coupled with my previous experience in a larger school district nearby, I can say, I too have experienced different approaches to serving the needs of our young people. I choose to work in this school district because I wanted to be a part of the transformation. I want to take this opportunity to thank our Board of Trustees this evening for doubling down on our efforts and putting the needs of our students, staff and community first. I want to especially thank our superintendent and the amazing team at Central Office, because I am now, for the first time, seeing real transformative change as both a parent and staff member of the school district. We learned early on, we needed to create a uniform and effective response to those students who had been identified with social, emotional concerns. The need was greater than our capacity to address all of our community's concerns. So, Dr. Musallim, Special Ed Director Andrew O'Hara and our team went to the planning, board meeting bi-weekly in a first-of-its-kind district-wide PLC. As my colleagues have shared with you already, our journey began really this past summer, when Dr. Musallim asked us to decide on a mental health screener that would help identify the social and emotional needs of our students when they come back to school. The first goal was to identify the various strengths and expertise we bring to the table and how we can harness our efforts and be effective in providing the right kind of supports. We establish a flow chart in order to be clear about the roles and expectations, so no student, staff or parent is left unserved or underserved. What we were finding was confusion by staff and others who assumed social workers could jump in whenever it was needed, which isn't the case. We realized we needed to raise awareness and help reconfigure our supports, so we can be effective, otherwise we were serving our students in a piecemeal fashion. The flow chart, as seen in the slide, helped engage all the support staff and provide expectation clarity when it came to what every individual's responsibility is. An example and another reason why this was needed is that as a social worker, we're limited to one meeting with a student before needing parental consent. In addition to social work and counseling, we have had critical additions to our team, which include the ELL liaisons, who play a central role in providing language assistance and solutions to our students, who are English language learners. Our addition of the RP PBIS facilitator has been beneficial in moving away from punitive measures and focusing on the root cause, thereby helping to serve the whole child approach. I have witnessed incredible change in our building's culture and climate at Riverside. I'm convinced it's through building community and addressing the disconnect at the hands of this pandemic. Lastly, we have filled the gaps, adding a school psychologist and tapping into their expertise, because they are more than just test proctors and evaluation experts. Our school psychs provide guidance and strategies that promote social, emotional wellness. And at this time, I'd like to call on our last presenter, Mr. Rashid Baydoun, who will discuss further applications in detail. Thank you so much.
If I may?
Yes.
Can we get that in a larger print, because I really can't see that? Is it, does anybody have copies of it?
Yeah. Um...
I know, I can't read it.
No, it's, I can't read it. I can't either.
Okay, they're not wearing glasses, so I know that you can't read it.
I can't read it.
I, I tried.
I, I would love, I would love to get a copy of that.
I, I will, I will send all the board a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, so you can zoom in and do all of it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. So, in echoing all the great sentiments shared by my wonderful colleagues, I think it's fair to say that Crestwood is at a crossroads, and what we do moving forward will determine the success of our district. I think it's, I think it's fair to say leadership is what was missing the last decade or so, and now we know what is possible. Can you imagine if Dr. Musallim and his team had, were under normal circumstances? Seriously.
Can you imagine?
Entering the halls of Riverside was quite the daunting task, as the Rumerville had the middle school as the Mount Everest of problems. Having always known the difficulties of being stigmatized and labeled, I knew the important thing was to press forward and not be bogged down by the negative perceptions people had. Quickly, we worked together with staff and began the steps of rebuilding trust and relationships. Taking the time to get reacquainted with each other and form even deeper relationships than we had before the COVID-19 pandemic, rather than rushing straight back into academic instruction, gave our staff and students the inclusive supportive environment they needed to heal from the mental health challenges of their past and, for many, their present reality. When schools purposely choose to build respectful relationships and meaningful connections with students, staff and families, a sense of safety, belonging and trust takes hold. When students feel valued, connected and supported by their school community members, mental health and well-being are just two of many improvements. Through the following initiatives, we've been able to effectively use evidence-based research to address the discrepancies within the student supports and interventions. Now, I'm going to give you a brief synopsis here, I know I said that I would go into detail, but I'm going to let Dr. Musallim and his team decide on a date for that. But I want to begin with the MTSS process, the multi-tiered systems of supports. What better than a pandemic than to really take a close look at our MTSS process and determine what areas we needed to monitor and reinforce? Early on, it was evident that our MTSS process needed major re-haul, because the staff were confused by the steps, but with the addition of PLCs, we finally had a concrete meeting time to address those concerns at a department and grade level. This, this is a game changer, and while we still have some work to do, I'm confident that the MTSS process will be ready to go this fall. PBIS is a great program, but it's often perceived as a reward and celebration program. Our SIP committee discussed the rules of PBIS in the future and how important it was to teach expectations directly. PBIS allows for us to introduce student expectations and policies within a given area. The data also helps us to determine the areas of improvement. Climate and culture is best when all systems are working at its optimal best versus one working better than the other. Restorative practices, restorative practices aren't another thing on our plate, but is the actual plates. I have to say, restorative practices is the paradigm shift our district needed. Gone, gone are the kick 'em out Fridays, and here to stay are the restorative tools built on the foundations of developing relationships first, because you can't fix or restore something that wasn't there in the first place. Building first the classroom community, then the school community, then the district community as a whole. You see, the power in building community is found in the actual word. With community, there is unity. You and I are the first three letters of unity. So, it takes you and I to build community. Restorative practices is a movement that will enable students, staff and parents to build strong relationships and create the Crestwood community we all need so desperately right now. I want to, I want to share that because of the great efforts of Central Office, we have been able to successfully train all the new hires, which include the recent addition to the administration, and as of last month, Riverside Middle School is officially one of three middle schools in the state to be all trained through the International Institute of Restorative Practices. The two-day training our staff are receiving would cost the district $495 per person, but because you hired a officially licensed instructor of the IIRP, all that's costing our district is a little less than $30 or so for the two handbooks it costs from the training.
Who would that person be that we...
Hint, hint, hint. Social and emotional learning, social, social emotional learning is being taught directly through our, through securing the C-Learning curriculum through Emory University. This is a, this is a pilot program that we were able to secure, again, costing the district zero dollars, which I'm telling you, I know Penny Morgan's loving this right now, but the reality is, all the staff here at Riverside have been trained and have a curriculum that is grade-appropriate and covers the important five social-emotional competencies required by the MDE. Mona Berry and Taghrid Al Ghazali, I always butcher that, are the co-chairs of the subcommittee for SEL here at Riverside. Whole system change occurs when we have all these systems working concurrently, because MTSS, PBIS, SEL and restorative practices are all forms of multi-tiered systems of support, and they look at the whole child approach. We want to thank all of you for giving us this opportunity to share our committee's report, and we want to emphasize that it takes a village, and while all the villagers couldn't be here presenting today, they were very much the reason we were able to present to you this evening. And as cheesy as this sounds, together we can recharge, be in charge, charging towards a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
I just have a few questions, Mr. Chair, if anybody else...
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say, Mr. President, this team, as I mentioned before, they have been working, working very hard, and this isn't something that they do just during, you know, their scheduled work time. They put in many hours, many nights, many weekends, and this team of people as a community, they really are invested in making sure that everyone in our community has someplace to go when there is a need. And I appreciate all of the work that they have done, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for making my job easier. God bless you all.
Yes, I, I do have to say, we're grateful, because this has been a goal of the board, to see the social-emotional part of this district, and that's so important, especially, I think, next year, it's going to be more important than academics, of course, because we know what the students have been through. So, I would love to see this even translated for the parents, and when will you do a presentation to include all the parents of the district to understand? If we can go back to that slide, the flow chart, because if you can read it to me, I would really appreciate it, because I'd love to see it. Because if you can read it to me, I would really appreciate it because I'd love to see it. I just can't.
Sure. The goal is to present to our buildings, to our teachers first, and then to also present it to the community, to the parents, and as well as the students so that they also understand how to access supports when they need it. So I will go through the steps for you. So it starts out with a referral form that we presented to you, that the teachers, a staff, a student, or a parent, if they have a concern about a behavioral or emotional issue that's non-disciplinary. So examples would be stress, sadness, feeling anxious, trauma, truancy, per attendance. They would fill it out and then it would be sent to the counselor. And then the goal is for it to be notified within five business days for somebody to address the referral. And then the counselors will review the form, determine the appropriate level of support, whether it's individual counseling, whether it's restorative, family meeting, social or consult, or MTSS. And then from there, the intervention would be provided. So that could be a continued assessment, it could be identifying one to three goals. The counselor can do that with the student to determine what they want to work with them on, what the issue is. And then they complete six sessions, or they could run a group for four to six weeks if it's a common issue with more than one student. Obviously, with parental consent, they would hold a group and they would provide that intervention for four to six weeks. And the, the key piece is the intervention and the documented intervention so that we have that information so that if we need to go to the next step, then we can go back and say, okay, what interventions have been tried, what was successful, what wasn't successful? If it is an imminent danger, meaning if it's a suicidal ideation or a suicidal plan, or anything that would constitute a CPS referral, then it would bypass all of this. Yes, and then we go directly to student support staff, which would include, you know, the social worker, RP. And then we would obviously consult with admin and then make a decision whether it's going to be a CPS referral, whether it's going to be, obviously notifying parents if it's a suicidal ideation that they need to get medical attention right away to their child, so. And then, after the interventions have been applied and things have improved, then termination would happen where they would end the counseling sessions and then determine if, or they may determine need for additional services. And then at that point, that's when we would look at, okay, is it now a social work referral? Do the social workers now need to be involved, so?
So we're looking at a five-week span between?
Four, about four weeks, four to six weeks.
Can I, can I just add?
So, yeah.
Yep.
I just want to add, so, so the reason why we, we wanted to do the flowchart was so that we, what we had right now was like, just everyone putting out fires. And there was no consistency, plus the documentation itself, like, so for instance, I, I was told that there was people doing restorative circles. And I'm like, okay, when you do a restorative circle or conference, there are usually contracts or, you know, agreements. And, and so you can document that and you can look back and, and use it and, and transfer it, you know, like, that, that. But, but also, we need to be able to look at our support staffs and say, like, okay, you know, everyone has their own, like, expertise that they're bringing to the table, right? And so if we have that order of succession, then, then we're not just throwing everything on one individual. You know what I'm saying?
No, that, that's great. I'm, I'm glad to hear that, but now I'm beginning to wonder, do we have enough counselors in place? Right? I mean, if you're looking at these numbers.
Can I just say this too?
They're, they're smiling right now, like, they love you right now.
Well, I mean, let's, you know, let's call it what it is. I would, I mean, we know what's going to happen next year. It's going to be more important than academics, and do we have the people in place? I mean, we're, how many students do we have in this building?
1,200 and.
How many do we have at the high school?
Seventeen.
Yeah, we add, we add, so the, the board approved, the board approved an additional counselor at the high school. We have four counselors at the high school now, when we had three. But don't forget, we really only had two because it was literally on Yisra and Shadia to do everything. The middle school, we have two, but what I will say is this, the board approved us, we added, how many social workers in the district? We added three social workers to the district on top of what we currently had.
Right.
And we.
So two at the high, so now the high school has three social workers.
Right, but I'm, I'm going to be honest with you about how I feel about this, looking at this. I'm concerned about the, the four-week span. I mean, if I'm a parent, really, if I'm a parent, I'm going to say it how it is. I was a, and, and I, I walked in those shoes, okay? And I would hate to see a child have to wait. So we need, they're getting service, but I want to make sure that we have the staff.
So if you want to explain what happens in those four weeks.
Just to clarify, so when we say provide interventions, we're, we're saying it could be twice a week, it could be once a week depending on the issue that's presented for that individual. And we're also talking about group sessions as well, so that you could address more students. And evidence-based practice, four to six weeks, is what's recommended because that's when you can truly teach a skill or provide those coping strategies that students can take away and then utilize when they go back to the setting that's causing the stress.
So they're not, no, they're not, it's not taking four weeks for them to get support.
No, 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 the intervention.
But I'm saying, but.
Why don't you read the chart?
What I'm saying is.
The, the intervention's being provided for four to six weeks.
Right. But we're going to start with the counselor and then we're going to wait.
The counselor can provide those interventions.
Right away, counselors do it right away.
Yes.
So, so you can refer.
But do we have enough staff? Because we know what we're going to come into next year.
If, if I may, real quick, one of the agenda items this evening is a vote on the contract. Once we start scheduling and we move from trimester to semester, that's going to allow us to see what our staffing is. So before we start posting positions, we want to look at the staff we currently have. Now, I will tell you that we have written in our Title I budget, the high school is going to be receiving a graduation interventionist, which is not an additional counselor, but it's going to take some of the responsibilities of the counselors off their plate, onto their plate, which is going to free up some of their time. As we continue to assess our numbers and we see where our numbers are, if we foresee that, okay, we need additional staff to support this process, we will then make that determination based on the numbers and based on where we're at, at the conclusion of scheduling for this upcoming school year. So it's not off the table, but it's not something we want to post and/or put out there just yet so we can ensure it's a cost-effective measure.
Okay, I have a few hands up if you don't mind. I know that you were reading through the, the circle, but Najah, you had a question?
Oh, just a comment. I think, like, seeing it, like you guys said, seeing it all, you know, laid out, and I know Yisra and I, like, earlier had mentioned just the consistency part of it, and I think, you know, kind of holds everybody accountable and so that nothing gets lost and, and a child doesn't fall through the cracks.
I was meeting all the time. We've built wonderful relationships with each other. So we're at a point now where we can all keep each other in check.
Yeah.
So, in a, in a very healthy manner, so.
Which you would kind of have mentioned as well, kind of like being able to say to your colleagues, like, like, that's not going to work without, and, and being able to hear each other. So I, you know, I love it and I just, I can't wait to see it actually, you know, be put into action.
If you pay attention closely, you'll hear in, in Yisra's, you know, speech, she talked, she kind of talked a little about that. It wasn't, it wasn't all, you know, roses are red.
That's not reality, right, yeah.
And it took leadership. It took people like, you know, like Dr. Musalem said, I, I, I don't care what was in the past. Moving forward, you're going to present, and then the good thing was, it was task, it was all about objectives. And going back to Nagas' thing, it's, for me, it's about being effective because you can have five counselors, but if five counselors are all putting out fires, then there's no, like, we're just putting out fires.
You're not getting any, just, nothing's getting done.
I want documentation. I want to know before.
We want to, yeah.
Yeah.
Making sure that it gets done and the parents get the follow.
We just don't want those Band-Aid solutions. And so we want to make sure that no student is falling through the cracks either. And so with this process, we're hoping to be able to provide those evidence-based interventions and provide those supports to the students and the families. And maybe sometimes those interventions could just be a referral, you know, to something outside of the school that the family may be struggling with, and we don't have that intervention in school, but we can provide the resources for it, so.
So I think going back, like, even when we had the flowchart with, in the beginning, with parents having questions and and the stuff that they had to go through, I think that is a good example of how well the process worked because I, I don't think I had anybody that reached out that said that when they had a question that it wasn't answered because it kind of was like, it was there and there was, everybody had access to it. So they didn't get, you know, didn't fall through the cracks and, you know, so people's concerns were addressed. And so I appreciate it and can't wait to see it be put into, you know, action.
I have three more hands up, and I know, so, Sue?
So first off, I applaud your efforts, and I think this is wonderful. And there's some, some board members who have been very vocal, myself included, about the need for something like this program because this district has been lacking, net with Dr. Musalem's team, but in prior years. I did scan and looked, and it said only ninth to 12th grade. So my concern was it's not showing middle school, and then I.
There's actually two forms. We have one for the middle school and we have one for the high school. But I think we only shared the high school one with you, so.
And I appreciate that. And the other thing is, I had two kids in the district, and one was an honor student, one was not an honor student. I want to make sure that kids that don't get in trouble still have that relationship with the counselors. When my daughter graduated as a salutatorian of her class, Mr. Ebbett, and I'll name his name because he's not my favorite and that might be wrong, did not know my daughter's name two weeks before graduation. I was there at a meeting with him. And so I want to make sure the kids that aren't always getting a referral are getting the attention they needed because she was under an enormous amount of self-put stress to be that high achiever and did not have the opportunity to talk to somebody. So I don't want those kids to fall through the cracks.
We're also going to provide in-class instruction as well. So the counselors will be going into the classrooms to introduce ourselves in the beginning of the year and explain what we're here for and the, you know, our roles and how we're able to help out the students. We never want a student to ever say, who's my counselor? We, we want the, got to know who we are and all the reasons.
Well, in this case, it was the counselor that had no idea who she was, so.
But we will be educating the students in, in small group instruction as well.
Okay, good. And I, as a one-board member, I'm saying this as myself, I would like to see your staff grow. So I, I would like to see you to be able to do more and more and more.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Lazar, oh, you probably heard what I said.
I just wanted to comment on Sue's comment as well. When we present to the students, we do want to emphasize that it's not only when you're in that moment of chaos or you're in that moment of, you know, I have nowhere to go. We want to let them know it's also preventative. So we're here, all of us, counselors, social workers, psychologists, RP. We're, we're here even if you just need to talk to someone because you're, you, you know, you have too much pressure on yourself and you just need to vent. So we are available, and we want to make sure that the students know that. And the parents also know that too, because sometimes parents need someone to just vent to about anything that may be going on. So we just want to make everybody aware that we are here.
Sue, just to say, I think I said it earlier, you got to, you got to build a relationship. You can't fix something or restore something that wasn't there in the first place. That's a prime example.
Absolutely.
And, and what, what Mona and I realized only just recently during Ramadan, we had some of the kids in the, in the
auditorium.
Auditorium, I was like, no, they just want to watch a movie. And she's like, Rashid, no, they want to talk. No, I think they want to watch a movie. And she was like, no, and so, she was right. We got it, we did a circle. We just, we just did, had these discussions and we see in the hallway, like, hey, you like, you want telekinesis? Because if you had superpower, what would it be and why? I was like, telekinesis because I don't want to get up. I just got my remote. But now they're looking at us from, like you said, a different line light. It's not just, I'm in trouble or I, I'm in need, but we got to know people on that whole different level, like, you know, what's your favorite superhero? You know? So build that relationship.
Thank you.
Thank you. If, if I could, Dr. Lazar, I had one hand still over here. Okay, Mo?
Thank you, guys.
Oh, I didn't see you.
I think you're also all very intelligent in, in realizing that the students that are going to come to you are not the ones that are going to mostly need your help, right? You mentioned group sessions, and obviously for children, let alone for adults, this sitting group sessions and be open is a difficult situation. So, you know, the trust piece that Rashid had mentioned, you know, is a big piece. You know, I think what really, mental health concerns are at all ages. So thank you guys for addressing that, but most importantly, I think the feedback from the teachers thus far. I'm interested in that because honestly, I think they're going to be the catalysts for all this to really get this wheel rolling. So how, how are they responding to all this training?
So when, when we, when we presented this to the teachers, the first thing they said was they wanted more training on MTSS interventions in their classroom, which right away, admin got on to that and is already been starting the training process because we want them to start with tier-one interventions. And when you're looking at the council referral form, it asks the teachers, what interventions have you been using? Because we're trying to avoid a teacher just, you know, seeing a, an issue with a student and then right away just, you know, okay, let me take it off my back. And then, we want, this is to help them build relationships with their students. And so they wanted, they requested the training, they're getting the training, they're even getting more training next year, and we're all here to support the teachers as well. Like, we're all very comfortable going into classes and communicating with teachers when they want suggestions or ideas of interventions that could work with students, depending on their specific need. They also wanted a form that was simple. We did not want to deter them away because, you know, nobody likes paperwork. Everybody is very, already very busy. So we didn't want to add more, we didn't want to make it complicated where we deterred a teacher from referring the student. So we took their ideas on how to modify the form in a way that they felt very comfortable, that it was easy to use and very understandable.
I think the Riverside group has the, the mountain to climb because if you can fix it between that age, it'll make life a lot easier for you at the high school, right?
Right.
And if I could just add, a lot of that training, the tier-one interventions, has already started for the teachers. And we have gone over very, like, concrete examples on how to do them. We've let them know that they need assistance or help, we're here to help, and also just given them resources. There's so many different websites out there, very easy, quick interventions that can be implemented, ones that maybe don't take too much time on their part but are effective and useful. And just to advocate on behalf of psychologists, I'd just like to say that we are more than just testers. Psychologists also are able to counsel students to do interventions, to assist teachers with these tier-one and tier-two interventions, to go over how to track data, things like that. So I would just like the, the board to keep that in mind, being that we only have one psychologist in the high school for 1,400 students and one at the middle school, so.
Thank you.
Just letting you guys know.
Oh, no, don't worry. Dr. Lazar has beaten me over the head on that a few times already, so I got you. Dr. Lazar has you.
I just want to answer Mr. Sabo's question about the feedback from the teachers. So the middle school team also presented to the middle school teachers the referral form and the process. And we actually were surprised by some of the feedback that we received. They were very thrilled to have it because to them, we have consistency. We have a form that allows us to put something in writing and then have follow-up come back to us and let us know what intervention was tried, what was the next step. Because they felt, again, they were referring, but nothing was happening. And so to them, this was, they were really thrilled with this. And we took it to our Culture and Climate Committee, actually, and they were the ones that gave us the feedback.
And, and just to say, we had strong personalities. Like, Dr. Musalem said, that when you present this, don't just do it to the, you know, like, yay, you know, like, I'll do anything to you. I mean, actually, the, I think a lot of them were, were almost like, is this really happening? Because like, they've been here for all these years and they've never had structure. So here we are presenting this structured set of, of, of goals, right? And, and explaining to them that you'll get a follow-up form. So once you fill that, it'll show what our actions are, what actions we've taken and what actions we still have to do. And then in addition to that, the family piece. So with the group, group sessions, your, their goals from parents will, students will, staff will. So it's not just from the student session. So parents will support the student in one, two, three, right? And, and, and before we can move forward, that's, we want it to be, you know, the whole child because we know those systems have to be in place, so.
At the high school too as well, they were very excited about the, the feedback. And also too, when I was talking to them, I was explaining, like, if, if the student's history teacher put in the referral, that feedback will go to all six of the kids' teachers, not just one. So because usually if there is problems being identified in one hour, it's probably, you know, exemplified in the other hours. So we want to keep the team, you know, all educated about what's happening.
So say that again, if, if one teacher puts in the form, all six teachers are going to, is that what you just said?
We want to give them the feedback. So if there's a, if it's an issue that could be exemplified in all the classes, for example, if it's maybe excessive absences, and that's exemplified in all classes, but one teacher put in the council referral form, the feedback will go. but one teacher put in the council referral form, the feedback will go to all the teachers. So they understand that we're working, we're working as a team to, you know, to improve the problem.
So absences are one thing, but other issues may not be.
No.
Okay, I'm just making sure we're not, okay.
It's only for things that you would see that would be a loss to board in all classes.
All right.
Not, yeah, it would be non-confidential things that are HIPAA-related.
Regardless, I don't think one teacher's assessment of a student should affect five others, isn't it?
But if I can add to that, and Rashid mentioned PLC, where that also takes us another step is this. If I am a, if I am one of six teachers for a child and I'm the only one that's having this issue, then in the PLC, the conversation can be, "Hey, guys, what are you doing? Help me." "I need to know how you're getting, you know, Linda to actually participate." "I can't get Linda to do anything in the class with me." And then that's what a true PLC is, is, "Well, I'm doing this and that." And the next thing you know, Linda knows that we're all talking and Linda starts getting more involved because that's positive reinforcement. It's what's working, let's reproduce it. It's not about what's not working and let's establish consequences that make it work. It's what's working, let's reproduce what's working and let's use the affective statements to support that child to be successful. I'm speaking to Rashid's heart right now.
Mr. Affective Statement.
Dr. Lazar, before we go to Danielle, did you have a question or a comment?
No, actually, the question was answered by this amazing team. I think I just wanted to reiterate that with that flow chart, that outlines the traditional steps, but that's not to say that there aren't different situations that can follow a different path within that flow chart. And also, you know, this team has demonstrated today how they've come together as a team to support each other. And I feel that, not I feel, I've seen in action how if there is something going on where somebody has a lot and can't get to it, they step right in and support each other and lean on each other and take some of those burdens off of the team as a whole and function together very well. So it's been very impressive to watch.
Okay, thank you. Danielle?
Yeah, I had a question. So when we say five business days, I don't know why this is echoing today. But when we say five business days, who's prioritizing those?
So who takes a look at it?
I did.
Okay, in there it says, there's a level like of how urgent it is, yeah. So depending on the urgency.
Right, but is there a guideline or are you guys, because it's kind of subjective to me?
It's specific to, specific to the referral form, specific to what kind of issue has arrived. You know, like, if it was specifically, like, so if it's a concern about eating, right? An eating disorder, that might be something that you might want to address right away, right? Or sleep, or, you know, sleeping, you know what I'm saying? It all depends really on, and that's where the professionals, the experts, counseling, you know, that's their area of expertise. They're the gatekeepers. They're the ones that are coming in. Think of it like an emergency.
So it wouldn't go to the counselors first, it would go directly to, that's where I'm confused.
Yes, the counselors first. They're the first step.
It links directly to our emails. So the counselor, like, if the teacher's filling it out and it's my student, I would directly get the referral form.
Fair junior.
And the reason we have the days is to hold us accountable. So it might not just, it might not take five days, but we need something in there to hold us accountable.
That's what I wanted to ask. So who's in charge of, like, implementation? So the implementing it all, making sure who's in charge to know that, how do you know that it hasn't been looked at or it has been looked at in five days?
Well, I would assume that if I'm not being asked to the teachers.
Follow-up and follow-through.
You know, someone will, you know, it'll come up, I, you know.
Like, does it go into a queue? You're saying it goes into an email? Does it go into a queue?
It goes to their emails direct.
To their emails, but.
Is there a lead person in each school or is there not a lead person that's overseeing this?
So there is not a specific lead person that's overseeing it because they're working, we're in terms that it goes to the counselor first, who has a team, they're following through on it together. The idea behind it is, and I can answer this in so many ways, in reference to if the teachers know there's an expectation and there's no follow-up, in so many words, the teachers are the ones that are going to be ensuring that things are answered. Because if you have teachers who are submitting and there's no follow-up, that's where school administration comes in and says, "Okay, what's happening? Where's there a breakdown in communication? Let's look at this."
That could be dangerous to Danielle's point, though. Because if they're not used to this and they don't believe in it yet, and if something falls through the cracks, then they resort back to, "Oh, this is just like the old system."
I feel like it just needs a piece in there of who's ultimately responsible, that the paper's been touched in five days.
I think, I think what can happen is, and as you speak, I'm thinking, being that it's a Google form that goes directly to their email, there could be one person in each building that just pulls that form up each day and sees what was sent. And then, and then there should, there could possibly be in that form, an initial that says, "Okay, Yisra Hamadi got it. She initialed that she got it."
Something. I think you need something.
Yeah, we can do something as such, so we can look at it.
And I'm not saying it has to be this huge process or difficult, but at the end of the day, if you have a process in place and there's nobody managing the process.
Checks and balances.
You know, you don't want, things can slip through the cracks. We're all so busy. I would just feel a lot better if there's somebody, I like your idea.
It's easier to manage statistics later.
Somebody touched this today or whatever.
There's a 24-hour rule. So like, for me, if you refer to the restorative center, or, I mean, that requires it. Within 24 hours, if you and I get a follow-up, a follow-up, you know, that shows, here's a following, here's what, this is what we, the service we provided. We don't have definitive answers to what the next steps are because we need additional supports, right? But you can get a follow-up. If a teacher doesn't, an email's right, you know? That is the expectation. So you know what I'm saying?
I do, but that sets five things.
Your teachers would be part of your checks and balances because if a teacher says, "Hey, Rashid, I sent you a referral two days ago, but the student's behavior continues to be the same."
There is, that is part of it.
That's a check, that's kind of a check and balance.
So maybe the teachers are told, "If you haven't gotten confirmation in 24 hours..."
We can add that in, but I can say, like I said, with the Google forms and the way the system is set up, we can look at it in terms of, there is one person that checks that form daily. And, because you can see, the form tells you when someone submitted, the time, the date and everything. So if it comes to a counselor and no counselor has picked that up at that time, whoever is looking at that form could reach out to that counselor and say, "Hey, did you catch this?" We could, we could look at how we can do that so it's, it's not an additional step, but it's also a checks and balances to support one another. So that's a great suggestion.
And I realize it might be something, I mean, I'm asking the question, it might be something that, you know, it can't be an instantaneous, you know, answer. So whatever, I'm sure you guys can figure something out and let us know.
If it's an AP, so the way, we, one of the things that I liked was, so for instance, here are, one of the APs does fifth and seventh and then the other does seventh and eighth, right? And it's that, in addition to the counselor, it's also the AP, so they also want that follow-up.
So I'll leave that to you guys. You guys figure out who's going to be in charge of it.
No, but that, those are good points.
Just to follow back up with us and let us know.
It's good to see the statistics later, how long it's taken you to get these things completed and that four to six weeks Nadia brought up earlier. Are we really utilizing four to six weeks also?
For interventions, that's for interventions.
No, I'm just saying, if you timestamp things, I think from a statistical standpoint.
The Google form will timestamp stuff. That's what's good about it. So it'll timestamp exactly when it was completed and then obviously with following up and then providing the interventions you're documenting, right? So provide that follow-up to the teachers. And that's why the paper trail is very important. So that we know, okay, this student was provided the support in the interventions and if they didn't work, then we can... And what we're saying with the flow chart is that these are not set in stone. So let's say after two weeks of a counselor providing intervention to a student and they're noticing changes haven't occurred, they consult with us and then we meet together as a team. I have to give a shout-out to my social-emotional team at the middle school. Between the counselors and the social worker, Tarede that works with me and also with Rashid, we work as a team and so we're always consulting and discussing students. Because not only, you know, let's say a counselor provided intervention and it didn't work, then we discuss it, "Okay, what did you try? What didn't work? Let's see how we can provide another intervention or suggestion that you can utilize with that student." And then if at that point, nothing is working, then it goes to us and we make that contact with the parent. So the student is never going to be left without some sort of support or intervention put into place.
And weekly, we have meetings with Admin. So we do, we do a 15-minute meeting every Monday to discuss, you know, progress with specific students. And this is obviously the only, you know, select individuals, so, who have access to that information as is, you know, confidentiality. So we discuss those students and we discuss, so this is my second week, one, two, three, we're struggling with getting in contact with the parents, you know, how do we proceed? And that's with Admin. And that happens once a week. Because that's enough, you have to understand, here's a part that I really need to emphasize. This wasn't happening, guys whatsoever. And I love that you guys want things to happen. I'm saying, you know, we got to learn how, we got to learn how to-
Baby steps.
You don't understand.
You're right.
This is not happening whatsoever.
If I could, if I could, if I could, because I do have other hands, so I just need to make sure that you get recognized first. So if there are no questions here, I have three other hands that just popped up over here, so I don't mean to cut you off. But I hear what you're saying. So Nadia?
I guess my question is, how did the Riverside counseling staff receive this?
Well, actually, just, I mean, we all had our growing pains in the beginning when we came together as a PLC. All of us, everybody. We were all like, "Are we not doing our jobs? Are we not doing what we're supposed to be doing?" And so coming together and going through those growing pains and becoming a cohesive team, we're all working together. And, you know, we all worked together to develop the form and we all have that understanding and after meeting with the teachers.
So everybody's in person in this building discussing, it's not virtual, we're together?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Nadia? I'm sorry, Najah?
That's because I was before her, but you are.
I know.
She always gets to go first. I'm just kidding. So if you're meeting with the Admin once a week, is there any way of just at that point, bringing your, you know, your weekly referrals and just kind of put, okay, so then, is that not then we'll-
That, part of the checks and balances, yes.
So in addition to that, it's kind of like a board meeting, like what, you know how there's reports that they offer you all? This is where we're at currently, this is the current students that are check-in, check-outs. You know what I'm saying? And, you know, after, check-in, check-out is a timed intervention. Where, but I'm going to tell you another thing, my goal is to get students to self-regulate. And the onus needs to go back on the students. So one of the things that I like to do is, when a student comes in, I give them a sheet and it's six weeks. And if I'm working with a group, they're coming in, they grab their Chromebook, they put in their grades and percentage. Because I'm looking for mindset, you know, growth here, right? And so we'll put a percentage, let's just say they're at a 47%, but now they're at a 57%, that's growth, you know? And how many tardies did you have or how many absences did you have? You know, the R, students already, and I'm, because the onus needs to go back on who? The student. And then after six, seven weeks, you sit down, we have that discussion, you should just see the look on their faces, that they themselves took charge. And it goes back to that chart, they charged. Because what we do a lot of times is move, right? We sometimes don't put the onus back in the student. And we want them to get to that point where they themselves are prepared to self-regulate, take matters into their own.
So will they, I'm just really quick to finish, so. So will it, when a referral comes in to, let's just say, one of you, is it forwarded, can it just be forwarded to an AP as well? Can it go to?
So if it's fifth and seventh, it's going to go to the fifth and seventh AP.
As well as, as well as?
Yeah, Scott's always going to get it here.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll go to the counselor.
So there are, that's my point, like, I just want to make sure, like, there are checks and balances, I mean, without, okay.
Yeah, there's specific, so for instance, in the middle school, we have counselors and social workers. We've divided the grade levels. So I work with sixth and eighth, Tarede works with fifth and seventh. That's the same thing with our counselors. And then our APs are also, they are working with fifth and seventh and sixth and eighth. So when it goes to the first counselor.
As well as?
Yes, yes. And we do a very good job here of keeping our Admin informed of any situation that arises with our, with any student, if it's something that they need to be involved with.
I mean, I agree with them. Obviously, we need to make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks.
For sure.
I just was trying to understand if there was anything else that, you know, I wasn't aware of.
Okay, Sue?
And I don't want you guys to feel like we're picking on you, we're not. It's just that we are so passionate about your program and we're excited for the growth and moving forward that we tend to have a lot of opinions.
constructive feedback. I just want you to know, we value constructive feedback. How can we grow if we're not getting constructive? If you guys sat here and said, "Great job," and we kept on walking, that is providing us with no help whatsoever. So no, 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 we appreciate the constructive feedback and some of you guys really, all of you guys triggered some really good ideas that we're already discussing on how we're going to move forward and making sure that we're all held accountable and we're consistent and this process works.
And there are things that you can say, Sue, that we necessarily can't. So a lot of us, we're smiling and laughing and giggling because we're very much in your, like, we agree completely. I hope you know that.
No, we can tell.
Oh, trust me.
And then I would never tend to micromanage because we're never supposed to do that and that would just be wrong and I've never done it before. Is there not maybe a grant available that we could have a dedicated secretary for strictly this program to help work with everybody?
Counseling secretary.
I thought we had a counseling secretary.
Well, we have a counseling secretary, but one that can work just with this program.
There is a social-emotional learning grant that we have applied for, but those grants you can only use towards programming. You can't use, and, yeah, you can, you, sometimes you can use them towards staff, but it has to be staff that is directly involved in the process. But, you know, but you have the counseling secretaries, you have, and we're addressing, that's a separate conversation. But I, today in my meeting with the administration, we're addressing roles of different individuals within the schools to ensure that we have more systems in place.
Thank you. And I also want to let you know that I also take on master-level interns as well and I take them on every year. So this year I have two that have been with me since September and every year I do that, I usually take on about two or three that are also additional individuals that are learning the role of a school social worker that also play a key role in running groups and seeing students because they embody what I do as well. So it's a lot more hands, you know, involved to provide support and services to our students, so.
Danielle?
Yeah, I just want to circle back and make a comment that I, you know, I got about 12 answers to my question, which I think is great. That means that the minds are already working and I just hope that you guys can come up with some type of process and make sure that there is somebody who's looking at those and making sure that they just keep going through the system. So whether it's at the admin meetings, whether it's in the email queue, whether it's a person at the school who's designated to go through those, like Dr. Musalem mentioned, but we do need a process for that.
So I'd just like to be informed on a regular basis how you guys are doing.
Right.
Well, as, will, those will be in central office Friday updates, just how the process is.
Yeah. And, oh, go ahead.
I just want to answer your question as well. So we did do a mental health screener at the beginning of the year and we had one for elementary, middle and high school. And so we had the counselors here and the counselors at the high school, as well as the social workers and the social work interns, all involved as well as Admin. And we all worked together to be able to call every single one of those students to follow up and talk to their parents and find out how things are going if they needed that support. So if that could shed some light maybe for you to see that we are involved and we want to ensure no one falls through the cracks. And I know this process is, it's work in progress. So there's going to be tweaks, there's going to be changes and that, that's what we're going to do. And so the feedback is definitely helpful, so.
And also too, we do meet monthly. We meet monthly through all the council social workers and support staff through the district. And we also meet with Dr. Musalem as well.
I mean, I'll leave it to you guys to figure it out. I think it's, it's great.
Great information.
And thank you for the, for the, the work that you've already done.
All right.
And just to see that process, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, add it to the flow chart would be great. So when we follow, we can know what's happening, stuff like that. Thank you.
I just want to say one last thing. I see that this is, the counselors have always been there. I'm going to echo the sentiments of Sue where the counselors may only know your name at the time of graduation and they, and that's, and that's all they really do know. I can say for a fact that Mrs. Hamadi not only knew my daughters but also would ask about how they were doing even after graduation. So I see that as a proactive approach versus a reactive approach. And I also have to say that I like the way that now it's not a high school, junior high school, it is a district program because it is truly that, a team. So thank you. And if we have no other questions, no other concerns or comments, I want to thank you on behalf of the Board of Education for your presentation.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, guys.
Great job.
I bet you thought that was going to take 10 minutes.
Well, they did their part. I told them 15 minutes presentation, leave the rest of the time for the board.
All right.
Thank you, everybody. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have a report that is quite lengthy. Okay, moving on, we have a report that is quite lengthy now. We have two sections of our packets that are filled with lots of information. So, with that, I'm going to ask that our business manager, uh, Dr. Morgan, Mrs. Morgan, sorry, uh, take this opportunity to present her action items.
So, the first action item we have today are the approval of the requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Okay, Nadia?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions as per attachment five A one.
Support.
All right. So, we have a motion from Nadia, supported from Sue, that Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions as per attached, I'm sorry, as per attachment five A one. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Madam President, motion passes. I'm sorry, Madam Secretary. All right. I just promoted you. My apologies. Okay.
She's twice been.
Twice. And a doctor over here.
Exactly. Number two, resolution for local district vote on Wayne Risa budget. Michigan law under section three eighty dash six twenty-four of the revised school code requires each constituent, constituent school board of Wayne Risa to participate in the Wayne Risa's budget development process. Not later than June first of each year, each local school board must review the proposed budget, adopt a board resolution expressing its support for or disapproval of the proposed changes the constituent district board recommends on the budget. The Wayne Risa board is then obligated to consider the specific objections and proposed changes. Attached is a copy of preliminary twenty-one, twenty-two Wayne Risa budget for your review and a model resolution to be adopted by the board. Upon review of this document and seeing no objections to its content, the administration is recommend, recommending that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution supporting Wayne Risa's twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two general fund operating budget.
Uh, Najah?
The Crestwood Board of Education, I'm sorry, um, I, I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Wayne Risa general fund operating budget for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, and that the Secretary of the Board submits a copy of this resolution to the Secretary of Wayne Risa Board of Education, see attachment five A two.
Do I have, so, do I have support? Danielle is the supporter of the motion and has recommended that Crestwood Board of Education approve the Wayne County Risa general fund operating budget for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, and that the Secretary of the Board, uh, submits a copy of this resolution to the Secretary of the Wayne Risa Board of Education, see attachment five A two. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, and the motion passes.
Number three, Divine Child shared time contract. Public schools are able to provide non-core instructional staff to parochial schools in their area in return for state foundation allowance for the amount of each time, the amount of time each student receives instruction from the provided staff member. Time spent with the provided teacher for religious instruction or activities is not allowable for compensation from the state. Shared time is a state of Michigan program that under the Michigan pupil accounting manual allows for public and non-public schools to partner on eligible non-core elective classes. The twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Divine Child and Crestwood School District non-core teachers agreement is being presented for approval, see attachment five A three.
Uh, Nadia?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education authorize a superintendent to sign a mutually agreed upon contract with Divine Child Schools for Crestwood to provide non-core instructional staff to Divine Child Schools for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year in return for the state foundation allowance for each student receiving non-core, non-religious instruction from the provided Crestwood instructional staff team, see attachment five A three.
And I have support from Danielle, that the, it is recommended that the, uh, Crestwood Board of Education authorize the superintendent to sign a mutually agreed upon contract with Divine Child Schools for Crestwood to provide non-core instructional staff to Divine Child Schools for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year in return for the state foundation allowance for each student receiving non-core, non-religious instruction from the provided Crestwood instructional staff member, see attachment five A three. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Nadia?
Not any questions, just a comment.
Yes.
This is such a phenomenal, uh, way for us to work with, uh, Divine Child, and it's a win-win situation, because of course, we're, we stand to give back about what, four hundred and fifty thousand?
Roughly, yes.
Yeah, so this is, you know, just so the public knows, we're not doing this for free. This is to help our district.
Over the past five years, it's ranged from three hundred and seventy-five one year to four hundred and fifty. And I believe the one year was four hundred and seventy-two or something like that. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Hearing none, no more. Uh, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, and the motion passes.
Thank you. Number four, approval of energy bonds. At one PM on May fifth, two thousand twenty-one, the bonds bids were open, sorry. Five companies placed a competitive bid for the purchase of our bonds. Upon review by EPFM and our bond, our bond financial counsel and Shroon, our bond legal counsel have recommended that the district award the bid to Nardi Securities as per attached documentation.
Uh, Sue?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached resolution for energy bonds, see attachment five A four.
And we have support from Nadia. And it's recommended that Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached resolution for energy bonds per attachment five A four. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye? Any opposed?
I abstain.
And we have, uh, one that is abstaining, which is Trustee Mo Seba. And the motion passes.
Number five, approval of Maisel insurance renewal. Crestwood School District is part of the Metropolitan Association for Improved School Legislation, or Maisel. Through this association, the district is able to take advantage of lower property and liability insurance rates for districts. Currently, the district has approximately five hundred and twenty-one employees, forty-two hundred students, and a property valuing over ninety-one million dollars. Attached is the insurance summary report provided by Maisel outlining the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two coverage for the Crestwood School District. This insurance coverage covers property damage, theft, boilers and machinery, automobile and general liability. As part of Maisel, the district takes advantage of pooling resources with other districts to recognize lower claim experience and lower insurance rates.
Uh, Nadia?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the continued partnership with Maisel for property and liability insurance at the cost of one hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and ninety-six for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
And, was that Najah?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion from Nadia, supported by Najah, and it's recommended that Crestwood Board of Education approve the continued partnership with Maisel for the property and liability insurance at a cost of one hundred seventeen thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars, uh, for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Are there any questions? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye? Any opposed? And the motion passes.
Okay, number six, approval of bleacher replacement company. On April ninth, twenty-twenty-one, Crestwood Administration put out an RFP for bleacher replacement needed at Crestwood High School. A pre-bid walkthrough was held on April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one for all interested companies to inquire about the project and walk the premises. Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Schley were both present for the walkthrough. The final bids were due May fourth, twenty-twenty-one. The submissions were evaluated by RFP required documentation, total cost, experience, past projects, and reference checks. The Crestwood Schools received two bids for review. The Crestwood Administration would like to award Intercal Spectator seating, the bleacher replacement project. Intercal products are a hundred percent made in Michigan and have provided bleachers for hundreds of schools and universities across the state. Intercal's bid for the project was one hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. References were contacted. Districts were happy with the work, indicating the company was easy to work with and willing to address any concerns that arose.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Sue?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education award Intercal Spectator seating by the bleacher replacement bid.
I have support from Najah, and it's recommended that Crestwood Board of Education award Intercal Spectator seating to, for the bleacher replacement bid. Are there any questions? And I have, yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I'll let you go first.
I just wanna say this is long overdue, and I'm really excited that we're moving forward to help, uh, beautify and, uh, have safety seating.
Well, I have a question, though. So, I was going through all of my packets and I could not find, uh, I thought we had a drawing of some sort. I know this is for the high school, this is for the north and south, uh, actually, I believe it's just for the south bleachers. So, it's both. But I, I know that I had some brief discussion with Mr. Schley during basketball season. I thought we were gonna see something. And I had to go back through all my packets. So, please accept my apology, because I, I wanted to, I didn't even mention this on Friday, cause I only went through the beginning part. And today I was a little busy out on the, keeping busy. So, I, I'm just wondering, is, is there a drawing anywhere or anything?
There was a sketch and I, I thought that I attached it to an RFP, a copy of the RFP, but I will make sure that it is in the Friday update for you to see on the next one.
Okay, yeah, you did provide a Friday update probably three weeks ago or so. Something came through, originally came through. I did see something that said, hey, this is what's coming down the pipe. But I thought there was a drawing and I-
There, there was some sketches that had this CHS in the stands, and you could see it when they're open and when it's closed. So, yes.
Maybe, maybe if it's something good, we might be able to look at our future buildings, if they do well. Um, Mo?
Is the seating comparable to what we have now?
Yes. It's replacing the bleachers that we currently have, um-
They're not gonna be wood, the new ones, are they?
No.
No, wood, they won't be wood, and they're gonna operate, and they'll be-
No, and they'll be, they'll have the-
Functional?
Yeah. They won't get locked up when they hit the button.
The ones we have are dangerous, honestly.
Yes, no. And so, they have the royal blue seating and, yes.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. I've, I've seen them get locked up when they're trying to roll them out.
It's charger blue. Whether it's navy blue, royal blue, I can't, I don't know which, Mr. Schley, it's charger blue. That's all I know.
I think we've always had a debate on what was charger blue, but anyways.
I've seen three different shades of blue on this.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah. There's been three shades of blue.
Go to this one.
All right.
Depending on who you talk to, the color of the blue, I'm not sure. So, it's going to be a charger blue.
All right. Okay, so, did we have a final vote?
Nope.
And I don't think we did. All right. So, with that being said, no other questions? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
All right. Now, I do believe we are moving into our personal, personnel report, and our Director of Human Resources and Student Services, and good evening, Dr. Lazar.
Good evening. All right, so, we're gonna start today off with one that is exciting news, not only for myself, but for the team who has come together, uh, quite a few times over the past year and a half to make me feel like I did have an assistant. So, the first action item is a recommendation for, to fill the Administrative Assistant to HR and Student Services position. The recommendation is for Ms. Linda Flores Troyce. Two Lindas in the same office, I don't know. But, um, Ms. Flores began a career in human resources in nineteen ninety-two, with the last two and a half years in Romulus Community Schools as the Administrative Assistant to the Director of HR. She's proficient in Word, Excel, MyStar, Smart, and Google, and she has extensive knowledge of processing FMLA paperwork, new employee onboarding, REP submissions, and maintaining personnel files. Ms. Flores Troyce is known to be highly confidential and is known to have excellent organizational skills.
Mr. Chair?
I heard Nadia. Oh, I heard Nadia. Maybe it's because I was also looking at her. I just-
Let her have it, let her have it. It's okay.
Okay, go ahead, Najah.
No, Nadia, read it. Oh, my God. Okay. I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Linda Flores Troyce for the position of Administrative Assistant to HR and Student Services according to the Central Office Staff Contract, Class One, Step Five, effective June seventh, twenty-twenty-one, pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment six A one.
Supported by?
Support.
Support by Sue. Wow, and I just, okay. All right. So, we have a motion, uh, from Najah, supported by Sue, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Linda Flores Troyce, uh, for the position of Administrative Assistant to Human Resources and Student Services according to the Central Office Staff Contract, Class One, Step Five, effective June seventh, two thousand twenty-one, pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment six A one. Are there any questions?
Uh, there's a comment.
Uh, Nadia?
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm very excited.
Linda, Linda one and Linda two?
I got Lindas, I got Andrews.
You have like a double.
It's Scotch, yeah. All right, okay. Anything else? All right. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Okay. Action item number two is also a very exciting, um, item that I know the entire team, um, is very proud to bring forth to you today. Um, we were notified by the CFT President, Mr. James Studdard, that the teachers ratified the three-year agreement on May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. The ratification vote, as reported, was a hundred sixty-seven yes to four no, least amount of noes, uh, in history, I believe, on a contract vote. Thank you to all the members of the bargaining team of the CFT and the administration for their efforts at the negotiating table. It was truly a team effort on both sides.
Great job. Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mo?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education accept and approve the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Crestwood Schools and the Crestwood Federation of Teachers as outlined in attachment six A two.
And support from Danielle. Okay, that the Crestwood Board of Education accept and approve the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Crestwood School District and the Crestwood Federation of Teachers as outlined in attachment six A two. Are there any questions?
I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Nadia?
Congratulations to our students, because this is a win-win for them, making sure that they're getting what they need. So, thank you for doing that.
I would like to reiterate that. I think that's absolutely correct, and I'm happy for our teachers too, because, um, I think at the end of the day, they are the, they was gonna hold everything together, and I'm glad they're happy. So, thank you, guys. Great job.
And, yes.
And I wanna add to those comments. Um, I just think that this proves that our teachers are appreciated by administration and our board, because they're doing what we need for our kids. And at the end of the day, that's what it's about.
Absolutely.
And I just wanna close with that, cause I see no other hands. And if you could, and I'm sure that you will, and I'm sure that they'll see it with, uh, the approval, or the vote, I should say, when the vote is final on this, uh, that it was not just an easy-peasy meeting at the table, that there was conversation, uh, that, uh, you know, things were brought to the table and negotiations had taken place. But I think at the end of the day, what's been said is what is important is the students, and then making sure that it's equitable across the lines for all. So, we greatly appreciate it, and it's a testament here, a hundred and sixty-seven yeses, uh, shows that the teachers value what it is that this administration has done, uh, to, to work collectively in the best interest of our district. So, with that, uh, are there any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Well, I'm gonna like snap my neck going back and forth. We gotta figure out a different seating arrangement. I'm like going back and forth trying to-
We can add over here, so we can do-
Yeah, then I can just go, whoop, okay, we're done. All right. Next.
Okay, action item number three is a proposal for a merit pay policy. The merit pay policy proposal was shared with the policy subcommittee on March sixteenth of twenty-twenty-one and shared with the whole board at the executive study session on March twenty-second of twenty-twenty-one. The proposals, the proposal shall set up a yearly merit pay stipend for teachers based on attendance and teacher effectiveness. The stipend will be calculated as follow. Um, based on the number of absences used, zero to one, maintaining an effectiveness rating of effective or highly effective, the stipend paid will be seven hundred and fifty dollars. Number of absences used, two to five. Number of absences used, two to five, effective, highly effective, four hundred fifty dollars, and number of absences used, six to eight, with maintaining an effectiveness rating of effective and highly effective, a stipend of one hundred dollars.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Nadia.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the teacher merit pay policy as presented, effective starting the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Support. Did you hear who it, was it, okay. Alright, so support from Mo. Motion from Nadia that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the teacher merit pay policy as presented, effective starting the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
That's why I keep looking here.
I just want to say this is music to my ears because I know how difficult it will be to be, to, to get subs at, um, coming up with this, with the new school year and it, it is nice to reward the ones that are not abusing it and doing what's right. So yeah, this is, this is a win-win. Again, for our students, thank you.
Anything else? Yes.
I just wanted to watch your head go this way. I have nothing to add.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. Alright, so with that being said, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, any opposed? Alright, motion passes.
Our fourth and final proposal today is for the preschool lead teacher salary schedule. One of the hiring and retention areas that has been a challenge for the district has been in the position of the lead teachers in our GSRP program. The quality of education provided at this age is vital in building the foundation of future social and academic success for our students. In order to assist in attracting and retaining high-quality teachers for this growing program, we are looking to provide a more competitive salary for these positions.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Sue.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the adoption of the GSRP salary proposal effective for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. See attachment six A four.
So we have support from Najah, motioned by Sue that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the adoption of the GSRP salary proposal effective for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. See attachment six A four. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor sit. And I just looked over here, yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
May I?
Dr. Lazar.
Our GSRP lead teachers were not aware that we were having discussions about this, so I hope that this will be a pleasant end-of-year surprise for them.
Oh, good, alright, beautiful. Alright, hearing none then, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, any opposed? And the motion passes. Dr. Lazar, thank you very much. I see you have no informational items, but as always, we appreciate your presentation and of course, your diligence for our district. Thank you. And let me see, I got one page left, okay. I got a stack here today.
It's been, it's been, it's been good busy.
Yes, alright, um, so now we are moving over to our superintendent for his report, so Dr. Musalem.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board of Education and community. So we got two, we have two action items this evening and some informational items. Uh, first action item, Wayne Risa election representative. The election for two seats on the Wayne County Risa Board of Education will be held on Monday, June seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Public Act two, three, three, and four, one, nine requires local districts to adopt a resolution at public meeting which names the party who is designated to cast ballots for the intermediate school district seats. The resolution must state which candidates the designee must vote for, see attachment six A one.
Yes, Najah.
I recommend that the Crestwood School Board of Ed, Crestwood Board of Education designate Nadia Berry as a district's representative to cast a ballot at the June seventh, twenty twenty-one Wayne Risa election and Sue Kaminsky as an alternate in the event the designated representative is unable to attend.
Okay, and do we have support?
Support.
Alright, so we have a motion from Najah, supported by Sue, uh, that the Crestwood Board of Education designate Nadia Berry as a district's representative to cast a ballot at the June seventh, twenty twenty-one Wayne Risa election and Sue Kaminsky as the alternative in the event that the designated pres, representative is unable to attend. Are there any questions? Yes.
So really, there's only one candidate that's-
Yes, it's, uh, Mr. Petri.
Petri.
Easy. Alright, see none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, any opposed? And hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
I don't think so. But when you do go and if you see him, tell him his former student, Joe Musalem, says hello.
Oh.
That makes, that makes two.
Three.
The names sound so familiar, I just can't remember.
Social Studies, Forts High School.
Wow.
Okay.
Alright, second item, continuation of the twenty twenty-one reintegration plan. On April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, the Board of Education approved to con, to continue with the twenty twenty-one reintegration plan through the end of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. This will be the last approval necessary for this school year.
Also, this will take us right into the end of, or June fourteenth, okay. Um, Danielle.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve to continue the reintegration plan through the end of the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. And hope that we never have to do this again.
I, actually I heard you this time, uh, Najah, so we have-
Always Nadia and I, we're always like-
I know.
No, you can have it, you can have it all.
Alright, so we have the motion from Danielle, supported by Najah, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve to continue the reintegration plan through the end of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Are there any questions?
Just glad it's the last one.
Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, any opposed? And the motion passes.
Alright, so informational items, Mr. President, I just want to say, let's all think back to February of two thousand twenty. That's when that whole process started. So thank God, we, as a team, stood united, stood firm, but most importantly, we were consistent through our process. So thank you, Board, for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Informational items, first off, uh, congratulations to Mr. Muhammad Ali Swayden, acceptance into the MIT Mostec Program this summer, so that's, that's huge, that's, that's a beautiful, beautiful accomplishment.
Yes.
Uh, some athletic updates. Well, again, congratulations to the Crestwood High School Boys Basketball Team for being named the Academic All-State Honorable Mention for our division. So hopefully, our goal is to get out of honorable mention and be at the top of it all. So it's, like I, we always say, our athletes are students first. Students first, community members, and then athletes. Uh, congratulations to Zainab Jabara, set a school record May, on May eleventh in the three, thirty-two-hundred meter run with a time of twelve minutes and eight seconds. The previous record holder was Jenna Hussein in two thousand sixteen. So that's, uh, the two-mile.
She's been eating Wheaties.
Yeah, oh yeah, so that's phenomenal. Senior Ali Bazi, congratulations, who signed with Madonna University for soccer. Uh, Mr. Muhammad Sob, named honorable mention for all-state in basketball. Ahmed Al Hanawi, signed with University of Michigan Dearborn for soccer. Uh, congratulations to our Riverside Middle School Robo Ravens Robotics Team for they won the award, awarded the, the design award. Uh, and I believe they were in competition with some high school robotics teams as well, so they really stepped up in that, it's beautiful. Uh, I'd like you all to be aware, more details to come, and we'd like the community to know, we are going to have our first entire Crestwood High School golf outing for all sports on Saturday, July twenty-fourth. So there's going to be more details to come. This is not just for one sport, this is for all sports. And the details will be coming out very soon where a certain percentage of the proceeds will go to the entire Crestwood High School Athletics Department and the middle school. And then the rest of the proceeds, each golfer can designate where they want that money to go. So if they want it to go to football, basketball, baseball, whatever, so a certain percentage goes to all and then they can designate where they want that, the rest of the percentage to go. Um, it's going to be at Warren Valley Golf Course and, uh, right over here, we're going to keep it local and, uh, more information to come. We're really excited about it and, uh, I do know, uh, Crestwood graduate and former girls varsity, uh, basketball coach, uh, and now attorney and, uh, Tarek Turfi, he is, uh, going to be, he's working with Mr. Mike Schley to bring in more volunteers and supporters and sponsors, so more information to come.
So will we be updating on that?
Yes, of course. Yeah, I just wanted to get the date on the board for everyone, so you could write in the date, know what's coming, but there will be more information to come, yes.
Okay, uh, Mo.
I did want to congratulate the school district on the most recent rating with the, uh, was it the U S News and, um, the high school ratings, and I know that we were highest in the area, so that's a testament to all the hard work all of you have put in, thank you guys. And you know, for many years, everywhere I've gone around Southeast Michigan, I've, I've heard about athletics and school districts and and I know we've lacked, um, what other school districts have had. But you know, the number of playoffs that we've made in different sports over the last two to three years alone takes this district into very, hopefully, um, progressive twenty-twenty's and in the next few years, hopefully, we can get the athletics up to par with other school districts, but thank you guys for putting the focus on, on first and foremost, the academics, because truthfully, that's ninety percent of everything we do. And everything else, you know, with athletics, um, thank you guys for all that support that you're giving, for all the coaches and the teachers.
Thank, thank you, Trusty Zaylan, and thank you to the board for having your faith in us to put forward these proposals and moving our district to the next level. And adding on to the athletics piece, athletics will be adding as part of Letterman Opportunities, cross-country at Riverside Middle School to help build our cross-country program in the high school. Um, also, we are adding an esports program. Esports is now, scholarships are now offered at major universities for students who are successful in esports, so yes, those kids that play Fortnite have an opportunity to get a scholarship, but again, academics come first. So you could be great as an esports, uh, athlete, enthusiast, but if you don't have the grades, just like if you're a great basketball player, you're not going to get into that major university. So it's beautiful now that we can tie those together in our instruction as well. So esports is also going to be a Letterman sport and then we are, um, going to be having a middle school athletic liaison with our current new contract and our ability to maneuver some of our staffing. We're going to be looking at staff to have someone who will have their, just an extra hour off during the school day. They'll, they'll teach four hours, they'll have their lunch, their prep, and then another hour, and then in that additional hour to support as a liaison at the middle school to help with athletics and grow our athletics in the middle school. Because as we all know, if we want our athletic programs to grow, it has to start with the little league through middle school, through high school. And with our new contract, we can now do this and it'll, it won't be any additional cost to the district. Uh, and some end-of-the-year activities, um, May twenty-fifth is just senior checkout day, seniors will be going to the high school to get their stuff and move on and so forth. May twenty-seventh, this Thursday, is Honors Convocation Ceremony, six P M. at Crestwood High School. Memorial Day recess is Monday, May thirty-first, so nice three-day weekend. Um, I also want to add in this, uh, that, that this Friday, I will be attending with the Highview students uh, to place flags at, uh, the nearby cemetery. Um, I'm going to ask Ms. Christopher Zell to invite all the board to that event as well, uh, to add it to your ca, calendar. I believe it's ten A M., but please don't quote me. Uh, Mrs. Frizell will send that to you. Um, and then again, graduation is June fifth, ten A M. at the Crestwood High School Athletic Facility, outdoors. So I need everyone to get into a group prayer and pray for good weather. Uh, but secondly, an update to that, originally, we were only going to be able to allow two family members per graduate, that is no longer the case. It is open now because as of June first, we all outdoor activities, there is no cap limit, uh, for attendance. So invite mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, soto, yoto, gato, amo, aunt, uncle, eh, gato, whoever you'd like, we want to see everyone there. Uh, last day of school, I mean, I can't believe we're already talking about this, it seems like, seems like yesterday. I'm excited, this is my first real graduation in my, as a superintendent, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I'm already writing my speech and I got to figure out how to make fun of every board member, no, I'm just joking. Go for it, I love it. But, uh, our last day of school is June eleventh, two thousand one. Also, congratulations to Ms. Andrea Wood who attained her Pupil Accounting Specialist Certification through Wayne Risa and the State of Michigan, so she's, she's rocking and rolling over there. And then my final commentary is, we've had a long meeting tonight, but I think it was a very good meeting. Uh, first and foremost, I want to thank the social and emotional team, the Student Support Services Team. They've done a lot and, and you know, you have to understand that this is uncharted water for them. They have never sat down with colleagues across the district. And I find that so weird, being that there's only five schools right now. Um, and, and this, you know, sad, this is what we have to do. So there, we are going to continuously be adjusting that and, uh, with adjustments and we will make sure that the board is abreast of what is happening and how it's happening. So I want to thank them. Moreover, I want to thank Dr. Lazar and Penny Morgan and, uh, the rest of the negotiating team. A lot of people don't understand what goes into negotiations. It's a lot of hours, a lot of additional time. Um, and Dr. Lazar and Penny Morgan were my right and left hand in those negotiations. And I will tell you, you know, um, I was not involved directly in the negotiations because I believe in team. And I believe that when you have a team you can trust and support, good things come out of it. And I believe in the team that the teachers brought to the negotiating table too. And I want to give kudos to, uh, the Crestwood Teachers Federation President, Mr. Jim Studdard. Because he brought a team together that represented everyone across the district, elementary, special education, E L., middle school, high school. Experienced, uh, you know, some not as experienced as others, because that created a negotiations that created an equitable contract. It is what's good for our students and fair for our teachers. And I say, with a hundred and sixty-seven to no, to four, that speaks volumes to our teachers' belief in taking our district to the next level. So I thank our teachers and I thank this team. Finally, I want to congratulate Trusty Alzaya on your daughter's acceptance into law school. We didn't get a chance to publicly congratulate you. I also want- Crestwood graduate. I also want to congratulate Trusty Berry on her daughter's recent tuldli. Congratulations and best of luck to your family. And I want to finally say thank you to the board for your trust, your patience and your empowerment that you have given myself and my team to take our district to the next level. We're just starting, there's a lot more to do. I'm excited about the future. I love Crestwood Schools, I love being a Charger. No one's going to ever surpass us moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, so with that, we will now move into our public comments portion. And do we have anyone? We have two. Alright. So before we bring them online, I got you covered. Before we bring them online, the, the first, they can both hear us, or can they hear me?
They have to call, yeah, they're going to call.
So will, will they be able to hear Najah read?
If they're watching the meeting, right?
Okay, so we will have this read, sounds official.
Okay, this meeting of the board is held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. This is not the time for debate or argument in order to permit a fair allotment of time to participants. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. The president may extend this time to five minutes per person when needed. Up to a half hour is provided for public input.
Alright, can you tell me who the first caller is?
This is, uh, Rashad Assad. This is Rashad Assad. Or Rashad Assad.
Okay. Are we calling them?
We're going to call them.
Okay. Hello, uh, Rash, hello, Rashad Assad?
Yes, hi, Mr. Garcia, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, good evening, um-
Good evening to you and to all the board members, uh, as well. I was just watching you live right now.
Thank you, yes, you are live and we will, we, we do, you do have three minutes to address the board.
Okay.
Alright.
My main concern, and I did email Mr. Musalem and he did respond to me back, but I just have a couple of questions, I'm going to make it- But I just have a couple of questions. I'm going to make it very short. I know, uh, Mr. Musallam, you told me for so far for next year, we are planning on going back full-time face-to-face. And that we will be, and that kids will be using Chromebooks in class. That is correct, right?
Chromebooks will be part of their instruction and their regular instruction home and in school come September of 2021.
Okay, now are you taking into consideration, even though masks, you know, for 70% uh, vaccinated masks will be listed, have you also taken into consideration, like let's say some parents want their kids to keep on wearing their mask just for safety precautions? Have you considered other issues regarding them going back in the fall? Because that is really concerning me because I'm still hesitating and between giving my kids and not giving them the vaccine.
So it is the, it is the choice of parents and students if they would like to wear a mask or not. There will not be a mandate uh, for wearing a mask. But if students want to wear a mask, then it will be allowed and it's, of course, that is the, um, of, of course, that's ultimately up to the parent and the child.
Now, I know further, I know we're going to be going back full-time, but my main, my concern is, are you going to be decreasing the class size limit? Because there's always a chance. I mean, even though COVID is kind of slowing down, but during the fall, we're going to be hitting a spike. A peak, um, you know?
Well, I, I will tell you from, you know, from August until that point, we will continue to keep an eye on the positivity rate in the area. And if we have to make adjustments, we will make adjustments, but I can tell you that at this, at this time, um, we're looking at every possible solution to support the students and to make sure parents feel comfortable. And we're going to continue following Wayne County Health Department, uh, the Michigan Health Department and the CDC's uh, requirements and expectations in order to put our students in a safe environment.
So basically, we're not going to be decreasing no class size limit or anything.
At this time, we don't have the intention to, but it's still a little early and we will continue to check the positivity rate through the months of July and August.
Okay, also another thing, you know, with all due respect to all the educators out there and the Crestwood District and everything, there's just a small, even though I spoke with Kristen the other day and I told her my main concern, I do respect to when you hire people, teachers into positions, you know? But there are some teachers that have been hired that to me personally, I feel they're not teaching our kids right. Because of their back, because of their experience, and I know, I know they're just coming up students and I know I heard out there is we have a teacher shortage going on. That's going to affect us big time, um, Mr. Musallam, in the fall. And I want my kids to be educated through teachers that are well experienced in education.
So I, like, you know, as I, as I state, if there is a concern with any of your children's teachers, I request that you address that with the building administration. And you know, and building administration will work with you. And if you don't find that, you know, the building administration is supporting your needs, then please, you know, you can contact Dr. Lazar, you can contact my office and we will support however necessary. But the building administrators, they're the direct line for parents and students when there are any concerns or struggles. And as you, as you have mentioned, as you have mentioned, yes, you know, we've been in email communication. There's always open communication, Mrs. Frizell, myself, Dr. Lazar, and I'm telling the building administrators are also there to support you as well.
I mean, so far, I haven't had any problems with any teachers. I mean, so far, they've been great, but the reason is because when I do watch the media, I saw that a proof of hiring this person and looking at their educational background and what experience they have compared to the other teachers who have been experienced for the past 15, 20 years, there's a gap. And now with the teacher shortages, I don't want, you know, you guys hiring somebody that's just got their bachelor's and come to teach middle school or elementary.
Well, we have some teachers that are brand-new hires that are excellent teachers and we have some teachers that are 20-year veterans that are excellent teachers. So there are excellent teachers across the board and our job as a school district is to continue to build the strengths of our teachers and to build our district to be as strong as possible. And I appreciate that.
I just want my kids to be getting the best education across the district. And I'm, I'm happy with the district. I love where my kids are at.
That is our goal as well. We want the best education possible for every single child that comes in through our doors every single day. So we're in agreement there.
All right, uh, Mrs. Assad?
For the Hillcrest Elementary.
Mrs. Assad?
My little guy will be starting kindergarten. And are you thinking of opening a third kindergarten class? Because 30 kids in one class is going to be too much for them.
I can tell you right now, it's still a little early to look at that. We always review staffing over the summer and when we see our numbers, we will make adjustments.
Mrs. Assad?
All right, all right. Yes, Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, I was just, no, I, I, no, I was just going to let you know that your, your, your time has run out. Uh, but as, as uh, Dr. Musallam has said, please feel free to make sure that you reach out to the building administration regarding any questions.
I do, I always do. I always do.
Yep, and their, and their, and their phones are always open for you as well here in central office.
Thank you so much, guys. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Absolutely. Enjoy, you two. Thank you so much for calling. So let that go and just let it ring until it goes off. That's what you spoke, yeah. Well, you can let it go, but yeah. Every time that someone answers. Yeah. That's all right. Okay, then our next caller is? Siman? That's with a K. Kifad? Oh, Kifa.
Hello?
Hello, Kifa, Siman?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Garcia. I'm with the Crestwood School District Board of Education. Thank you for allowing us to give you a call back. Um, we do have a time limit of three minutes and when the alarm sounds, your three minutes will be up. We will stop the clock if someone from the board, I'm sorry, if I answer or from administration. So at this time, we welcome your questions or comments, uh, and you can direct them to me.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, first of all, I want to thank everyone and everything that you are doing for um, our families and our children. Um, I am a mom of five children, um, two Crestwood High School graduates, three that are currently attending. Uh, I have a middle schooler which has been struggling uh, socially and emotionally since day one of fifth grade. Um, and is currently in the seventh grade. Uh, long story short, we have been a part of the district obviously for quite some time now. We're going to fast forward, fast forward to when we were going in to choose the new superintendent, when we were seeking a new superintendent. I attended um, all the interviewing process, um, and was so excited when Dr. Musallam was chosen. I knew uh, he was going to be a great asset to the district, um, but it was definitely going to take some time. Um, but uh, it got to the point where enough was enough. Um, I ended up unfortunately having to pull my son out of the middle school, um, to homeschool temporarily. Um, and then soon after that, the pandemic hit and everyone ended up being um, virtual learners. So I chose to send him back, um, due to smaller class sizes, thinking that might, you know, help and with the support system that the schools now have uh, to offer. Um, he was unfortunately still struggling a bit. So I uh, attend cab meetings um, monthly. And Mr. Rashid, um, Baydun was uh, at one of the meetings virtually. I loved his energy and the skills and his techniques, the strategies that he spoke about. Um, I reached out to him hoping my child would pick up on his energy and his positive techniques and just him being a male, positive male role model um, that I knew he needed at this point in his life. Um, the first time, I will tell you, that he met with Mr. Baydun was the first time I seen my child smile walking to the car as I picked him up. I, I had to hold my tears back. I knew he was going to reach out to him. My son didn't know. I did it discreetly. So he was so excited when he got in my car and he was telling me all about his day. Mind you, he's in the seventh grade. He's been there since fifth grade. He's never come into the car and showed that kind of energy. I was so ecstatic. I had to hold it in because I didn't want him to know that I, you know, I reached out to Mr. Baydun. And I'm just so excited to see where we're going here. I, I, I see the changes as we speak. I appreciate all of you guys. I am a very active mom, um, parent in the district. I have, like I said, two that graduated, one at the high school, one in the middle school and one in elementary. I'm all over the place, but I wouldn't have it any other way. I appreciate you all. Thank you for everything you do. I know you guys are losing lots of sleep. We are too as parents. I never wanted to be a teacher, but I, this is the world we're living in now. Um, so thank you again for everything that you guys are doing and uh, just a special shout-out to Mr. Rashid Baydun. Thank you all.
Thank you. And, and, and since I, I'm sitting here in this chair, I guess I have the opportunity of speaking uh, and taking the microphone away from our superintendent and want to say thank you for uh, bringing your child back to Riverside. If you, and you are active with CAB, so you know that there's a new principal that will be starting here, or has started here. Um, and if you get the opportunity to watch, or I don't know if you watched it live, Mr. Baydun presented to the board this evening uh, regarding.
I did watch it.
Okay, so we uh, were very aware of not only Rashid himself, but also the members of the guidance counseling, uh, the psychology and the social workers there within the district. Uh, but you could tell, I could tell, and I'm, I'm sure members could tell from his energy when he presented today, uh, that not only did he create the energy here in this room, uh, the energy that he's creating for young people is going to be very, very impressive and very important. Um, again, thank you for allowing your child to continue his education here in Crestwood and putting your faith not only in this Board of Education, but most importantly, in this administration, um, and, and allowing your children to be here.
Thank you so much. Thank you again. Thank you all.
All right.
Yes. So I know Kifa had called me, like, we were attending a meeting where Rashid was presenting and um, and she had called me and kind of asked, you know, I, I'm, I'm glad, I'm really glad that you ended up reaching out to Rashid and I'm even happier that you called to share that story because I know a few of us were tearing up because I think when you, you know, when you have kids that struggle, and I mean, I have one that struggles in that area as well and she's connected with Rashid as well. Um, and he has that energy, so I'm, you know, that's.
No, when he was on virtually at that cab meeting, I literally was crying on the other side of the screen. Because I'm, I knew right away. I'm like, oh my goodness, this is exactly what we've been needing.
So I, thank you for calling, Kifa. I'm, I'm, I'm glad.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for calling and we hope that the rest of the school year for, for your children remain uh, very positive and be looking forward to a, a fresh start and a, a full start here in September. So thank you for calling.
So much. Thank you all.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Enjoy. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, I took the mic from you this time. All right. Okay, so we have nothing else from our public to contribute to our meeting, so at this time, I will ask if we have any announcements from the board, so. Or announce, yeah, any, yeah. I, I was going to save Nadia for last, but let's get her out of the way now. Okay, no, Nadia.
Get me out of the way. I just wanted to say, um, uh, the Amity Foundation and Moby Dune, Councilman Moby Dune, uh, what they did that night to bring the community together, that um, walk and run, whatever they did over at the high school, that is what is exciting about what's happening in this district, bringing the community together and starting to have these events and to have the golf outing. This has been like a dream of mine to see this stuff start to happen and it's really exciting to see that starting to uh, move along. So thank you for that and I hope to see more events and involving the community and involving all of us. Um, this is exactly what this community needed. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Nadia. All right, um, just a, just a, just a couple of things for me. I just want to send out uh, condolences. Uh, this happened a few weeks back, but a graduate, I, I apologize, I can't remember the year that Joey graduated, but he played football here, he played football at uh, at the high school. Uh, Joey Lee, uh, his brothers attended Crestwood and then he was the youngest of them, uh, sadly passed away from natural causes. Uh, he left behind, I believe she's nine years old, a daughter of nine years old. Uh, so I just wanted him to be recognized. Um, and then I also wanted to mention, uh, you know, we may have to, board, look at charging our administration at creating some type of group committee club that goes around, because you just mentioned it and I was there, you were there with me. I think you were there at the, at the walk. Oh, that's right, okay. And I, I really do think we need to create, or I'm sorry, I'll leave it up to administration to figure out how they do it. But it'd be nice to see a, a group that goes around and actually grabs live video and streams it to show what we do. We can talk about it after the fact and it's great, don't get me wrong. What the, what this district does is phenomenal. But there's a lot of people that hear it after the fact, although it was a good turnout. I, I really think we should try to do something. Maybe it might be. Well, drama, you know, through Kayla Colbush or maybe through Pete Marabias, not Pete, I'm sorry, he doesn't run that class anymore. I, is it Mr. May, no, Mr. Bajoric, Mr. Bajoric, you know, maybe something could be done. Again, what we, what the district is doing, not us, but what they're doing and the groups of students are doing and, and creating this positive energy within the district is important. And I talked about this, uh, you've heard me talk about it all the time. We need to somehow do something very creatively, but a now thing. Because after the fact, it's too late. People are like, well, you mentioned it, because I've had that. You, you mentioned something at a board meeting. Well, what was it?
I will, I will.
It's after the fact.
I will have a proposal for the board at the next board meeting.
Okay, we're going to talk, because I think it's something we've mentioned once before, so.
Mr. President, you know, you can always turn your phone on to Facebook Live?
You know, so, okay, so the thing is, is that um, being in CBA classes, there's that real fine line about getting yourself involved using your social media. It's like when you use your own personal social media, it, it. I know, but it's in, it, it's that fine line that people will, uh, someone who opposes what you're doing will question why you're doing it using your own social media. And I don't have, I mean, I, I don't, I have district emails, but I don't have a, you know, district social media.
I have, I have some, since our la- you know, we've discussed this, I, I have a very rough, it's like one of my 50 things that I'm working on.
Okay, then I, okay.
But I will, I will have a proposal or some proposals for you by the next board meeting to look at as a board in a study, in the study session to start thinking which direction do we want to go? And there's some that involves students as part of clubs. So you got the journalism and then someone who is contracted by us as a district to take that information and make them more professional.
Well, I do believe, I do believe, and I don't remember if it, is it your team that has someone with the drone or is it, was it your son's class that had someone with the drone, uh, uh, Najah? Was it, it was someone who, it was a sport, but anyways. Okay, okay. Or was, it was last year, yeah, that someone was flying, a student was capturing that and then streaming it.
It was a graduate from Crestwood who, yeah, Joel, Joel has his name in it.
Well, maybe, maybe that's what we, you know.
He did the drive-through graduation.
Yeah, and they, you know, those are just, again, it, it's great and it's great to talk about it after the fact, but there's, I've been receiving calls about, it's, they've heard it being said and said, you know, can we see more? Can we see more of the one video that was done by the teachers from Crestwood? I got a lot of phone calls. It's like, wow, now we finally, I, they, I, France sees what it is that's going on within the district.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hoping to have something for you to look at and make some decisions soon for the upcoming school year, guys.
All right.
We do, it is.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not us, it's the district.
It's marketing, it's marketing the Crestwood brand. Who are we? What do we represent? What do we do?
But we did the same thing.
Yeah, that's where, you know where I got my, that one from.
That was funny because that was part of the conversation today with the administrators. It said, we got to come up with one from Crestwood, for Crestwood.
Yeah, true, but that one, you know what? That one's significant. That really, tradition, pride, and you know what I'm speaking of, right?
Tradition and legacy. I created that as the principal of Fortson. And everybody told me I should have, I should have copyrighted it.
Yes, you should have.
Now everybody's using it in the city.
It's huge, really is. It really is.
Because I wanted our kids to be proud of who they were, know the traditions of the district and the school and what legacy that they.
Cause I wanted our kids to be proud of who they were, know the traditions of the district and the school and what legacy that they're gonna leave behind. That was our whole focus. We're gonna come up with something better for Crestwood.
But I'll tell you what, that, that's significant, that right, those three words are, are very significant and it's, and it's evident. And I'm not gonna take a lot of time, but it's evident, I mean, look at, you, you, we had counseling staff and, and, and two of them, no, Barry, uh, Shadia is also a graduate, I think.
Yeah.
And a couple, Shadia, Rashid and, and, um, Yusra, they're graduates of this, I mean, it's, it's, it's evident what this district is doing and, and what we're producing, what your administration is producing. And they're coming back here to service our students and it's important that we market that and we tell our community, show our community, I should say, what it is we're doing and how good we're doing it. It's true, your daughter, uh, going to law school and, 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 and many others, medical school. Uh, uh, who did we see at the, um, doctor, uh, his father's a real estate agent, he's an athletic doctor, works for the kickboxing and I just drew a blank on his name. He's the oldest of two, he only has a younger brother in him, Bilal, Alderani, doc, yeah, and his brother Bilal. So I mean, I mean, here's a guy that's out with, I mean, he's a doctor, but not just a medical doctor and, but out there with the athletes and doing the training. Um, Hassan Chammy with the pharmacy, I mean, we, we, that's right, yeah, he is, but we've, oh, and, but I'll tell you the story. But just, you know, what we do and, and how we do it, it's important.
It is, I agree.
All right, enough of me pontificating, ladies and gentlemen, so I appreciate it. Thank you to our administration, thank you to the board. Uh, thank you for being here, we wish you to be safe and we will be returning here in a couple of weeks, but until then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Wow.
All, all five.
Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion came from Najah, supported by, I swear, I heard it from here.
I didn't even say anything this time.
Was it you? I swear. Motion from Nadia, supported from Sue, we are adjourned.